Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Councilmember Harvey. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I have two big monitors on my desk and a laptop for work. Personal laptop, but I don't have the zoom on the big one, so I have to use the little one. I start running out of space.
Yeah, I hear ya. I don't have a really good spot to actually sit. At least you have a nice desk that you can sit at.
Right, but the only downside to it, it's on the other wall to the kitchen. So if there's any noise in there at all, like somebody rinsing a dish or something.
Yeah.
It picks right up on the mic. Quite the week last week, huh?
Hmm, yeah. Crazy, crazy.
It is crazy.
Are you up in Sacramento at all this week?
Uh, no.
Oh, good.
Everything we're doing now is all remote.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Yeah, fortunately.
Might get a little crazy up there, too.
Yeah, all the capitals.
Yeah.
I saw that sad posting of fire trucks.
Uh, Ben was telling me about it.
Yeah.
Tough times.
Well, and that industry is such a thin margin to begin with.
Exactly. Well, and they're so dependent upon the, uh, college students and without them, I mean, that's a big population out.
It really is, and that's where your markup is.
Right.
Yeah.
And they're, we're always very consistent in being there, you know?
Right.
I mean, 'cause if you think about it, they haven't been in school physically for almost a year.
Yeah. Good evening, Councilmember Sparks.
Good evening, Mayor Moore.
How are you?
See you. I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm okay. Susan and I were just talking about what a crazy week it's been.
Starting off the new year with more craziness.
Right. And they used to call Cattati crazy town. I don't know.
Downright normal.
Exactly.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, good evening, Ms. Bishop. I take it you're filling in for John Barker?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor Moore. Good evening, Councilmember Harvey. Hello, Councilmember Sparks. I don't think we've had an opportunity to meet yet. I'm Jordan Bishop, Assistant City Attorney, filling in for John Barker.
Hey, Jordan. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. See, did I miss anybody?
Glad that you could join us.
Yes, happy to. It's been a while.
Yeah.
Hope everyone had a nice holiday, took some time off, recharge.
It was different.
It was.
I went from the backyard to the front yard.
There you go. Oh, hello, I see Councilmember Ford. Hi, my name is Jordan Bishop, Assistant City Attorney, filling in for John Barker. Nice to, uh, meet you.
Great to virtually meet you.
Welcome, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Moore.
No, it's still daylight where Ben is.
Yeah.
Lauren, remind me, does John typically stay on camera? Um, what's the, what's the standard practice?
We have just been doing audio up until now, pretty much.
Yeah, Jordan, sorry, this is, uh, gonna be the new normal for us.
We need to come in, so we said, well, we need to do video now.
Oh, that's so nice. Hey, Damian.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening. Your beard's looking good, Damian.
Yeah, thanks. A little beard, you know. I'll shave it when we're done.
Almost starting to look your age now.
John, did you get us a new city manager?
Well, I hope he has a new attitude.
Ow. Jeez. Yeah, thank you. It does, it does feel totally weird, I have to say, 'cause I don't usually have a beard, so it's kind of, it's kind of bizarre. It's almost like sensing, you know, whiskers. Every time you come close to something, you feel it, and it's just kind of like, ugh, what is that? You know, my wife says the same thing, like, "Don't kiss me," you know, anyway.
It does take some getting used to. Good evening, Councilmember Har- Landman. Vice Mayor Landman.
Mayor Moore, it's 7:00 PM. If you'd like to start.
So I was gonna ask our city manager before we go live here, did I see that I've actually gone to the trouble of shaving and putting on a sports coat? And find that my city manager hasn't shaved at all? I'm horrified. I'm appalled.
Yeah, I know. It's, I was just telling them that, uh, since Christmas time, I've decided not to shave until we're, we're through this, you know?
I hope you get to shave it soon.
Yes, that'll be good.
I'm off, miss.
Mayor Moore, if you'd like to begin at 7:00 PM.
Do we have everyone present?
Mayor Moore, um, this is a sound check. Lauren's having issues, um, with the mic. Can anybody hear me?
Lauren, I can't hear you on here, but I can hear you through the server room.
Thanks, Angela. We're working on it. If you can just let everybody know for us real quick.
Yeah, she has a different kind of a notation on, on the, um, panelist's screen.
Yeah, we made some changes over, um, the break to, um, pull out the, some of the analog equipment that was in the system to make it fully digital to, to address some of the feedback and other issues. And so she'd be using the microphone in the council chamber directly.
Turn your mic now. Turn, turn it on.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Uh, you're a little, little.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor Moore, if you'd like to go ahead and start the meeting.
Thank you. Uh, we will call the meeting to order on January 12th, 2021, at, uh, 7:03 PM. Uh, Ms. Burgess, if you would give us a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Spark.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. And now, if we would take a moment and, um, do a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are getting better at that. And, um, at this moment, I would like to take a, uh, just a moment or two and a moment of silence to recognize the officers and all those that were killed in that terrible event in DC last week. And any of those that have been family in France that have been affected by this horrific COVID virus. So just a moment of silence, please. Thank you all very much. Now, I would be looking for, uh, approval of the minutes.
Move to approve. This is Councilmember Harvey.
A second. Is Councilmember Ford?
We have a motion in a second. Uh, Ms. Burgess, if you would take a roll call on that, please.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you. Now we'll, uh, move on to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendee viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes citizens' business item, which is a designated, designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at cattatycity.org. Citizens interested in receiving city Cattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 949312888777. It's our top provide, it's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, as well as appointments by request. Staff continues to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. And like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@cattatycity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. And do we have any changes to the final agenda? Mr. Oviedo?
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes.
Okay. So now we will open it up for citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not published on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the council policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend this time limit for a reasonable time where there is a disability accommodation has been requested. Okay. Ms. Burgess, would you like to see if we have anybody that would like to comment on citizens' business?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. For our attendees this evening, please use a raise hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial *9 if you're dialing in from your telephone. And go ahead, attendee 427536.
Hi, my name is Adrian Lobby. I live at Kingston Way, uh, in the Red Hill apartment building. I've been, of course, very, uh, concerned about the riot and mob and insurrection at our, um, um, Capitol Building and looking at it from a local perspective, wondering what's going on inside the houses in Cattati. Some of the sympathizers to this movement, I am sure, live here. And in my very informal and unscientific way, I've talked to people of color in Sonoma County who have said they feel more at risk, more tense. Seeing a white person and going, is that person a Trump supporter? And then having the stress that that causes. So I think it's a good time to think about people's health and safety in, in our local area. I also want to report that, uh, African-American person that I know wrote this to me. Uh, on Sunday morning, about 10:30 to 11:00, I was riding in Cattati on my bike. As I was riding, I kept looking down at my tire as there was rubbing. I had a package under my arm and was coming home from the Cattati post office. I came down my street and rode to my house to switch bikes. I rode into my driveway and got off my bike. A few seconds later, I heard a car driving into the driveway. I looked and saw the police car. I came out to see what was going on. As I approached, he backed up, nodded at me, and drove off. The whole incident was unsettling and left me wondering why. I'm still wondering. The officer was a younger man with dark hair. So I have no idea, you know, what this officer was thinking, but it seems fairly harassing and intimidating to just follow someone into their house, uh, into their home yard with the police car and not engage with them and talk to them at all. And I'm sure that these kinds of things happen. In fact, this, this person who talked to me said he didn't, that they didn't want to make a police report, 'cause it's just part of the landscape of living in Cattati, which is primarily white. So I wanted to tell you all about that and, um, ask for your attention and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lobby.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Good evening, and to everybody here assembled, Happy New Year, I hope. As a ten-year member of the Cattati community, as an elder, as a woman with lots of gray hair, I have not experienced a whole lot of overt or covert racism. But that doesn't mean that it isn't here. And I know that in our community, we have people who are supporters of the outgoing administration, the outgoing president, and all that he has done to promote his personal agenda. We must be on the lookout. We must be ready. We must be cautious. And we must continue to fight the racism that is so endemic in our culture. And this is my home. Thus, I have started here. And many of you have chosen to join this anti-racism initiative. We have a ways to go, but we must continue. Because as Gandhi said, we must be the change that we want to see in this world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crump Shears.
Mayor Moore, that ends public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burgess. So now, we will move on to the consent calendar. Of which there is nothing on the consent calendar. So we're moving on to future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, through the mirror.
Yes, please.
Uh, I have one, but I wonder if I could bring it up during my council report later in the program. during my council report later in the program because it relates to what I'm reporting on with with yours and my colleagues forbearance.
No, I don't think so. It's now or never. No, you're certainly welcome to.
You just get me talking longer earlier. You don't want to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And no other suggestions for future agenda items? Then we can move on to our regular, oh, I'm sorry.
I think several of us had our hands up in the zoom.
You have to look for hands, Mayor. So Mayor-
There we go. Councilmember Harvey, go ahead.
Yes, I know that while we have been not having meetings and such, that the survey has been going on, and I was wondering if the city manager could give us an approximation as to when that might be coming again, especially in light of some of the comments made. And I know that they've been working really hard on that. So that would be helpful from a future agenda item to kind of have some sense of when that might come back. Thank you.
Well, so through the mayor, I could just say that right now, the plan is to bring it back on the 26th of January, so the next council meeting, to have a discussion about the results.
Thank you. That's very quick.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Thank you, Mr. Obed. Councilmember Sparks.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I've been very worried with the extension of the stay-at-home order and the worsening of the COVID crisis, about the impact it's having on our residents and businesses. One of the things I'm most concerned about is that even though we're having an eviction moratorium, we don't really know how many residents in Katati are behind on their mortgage payments, behind on their rent. And when these moratoriums expire, how many people are going to be needing to dig themselves out with, from being so far behind on bills and things? So what I'd like to propose for future agenda item is that we, that we ask the staff, city staff, to do a comprehensive report to find out where we are, how many of our residents are struggling to pay their bills, how many are behind on rent, behind on mortgages, and our businesses, that two of our most visible businesses downtown are, for our tux I just saw on Facebook today is shutting down. And I know that Redwood Cafe has a GoFundMe. I would like us to be armed with knowledge about exactly how many of our businesses are in danger of going under because while those are very visible, I don't really know what the status of all the other businesses in Katati are. So I'd like us to to make it a priority to do a status report where we can really determine where are we, how bad are things? So then we can decide if there are actions that we need to take or we can do, take to help going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure what that might look like, but that's certainly something that we could bring up and talk about what that might look like. I know that we have had our community development director, Mr. House, and our city manager reaching out to a lot of the businesses, but I don't know that we've had an opportunity to facilitate reaching out to residences and determining those types of situations. So I would certainly think that that would be something that we could consider in light of what's happening these days. Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Just one small item that is definitely secondary to to what Councilmember Sparks brought up. That's got to be on the front burner for now. But but I'd like us to revisit, get back. We had started talking some time ago about looking at the city logo and updating that logo. And I'd like to make sure that's still on our radar to get back to. I think we, it's time to take a look at that logo.
In deference to the Native American culture?
Yes, in consideration of how that is currently perceived, yes. It's representation of Native Americans.
Thank you. I think that's something that we can probably talk about. Any other suggestions for future agenda items? There is one particular item I had talked with our city manager about before, and I think now it might be something that could be appropriate. And looking at the digital divide, if there's something that we might be able to offer, especially those that may not be in a position to have the best network connections, and looking at education and the future of work in California moving forward, and I'm sure across the nation, that might be something we might also consider down the road. Okay, now we'll move on to our regular agenda items. And Mr. Obed, will you be presenting on this item A?
Yes, I will. So thank you, Councilmember Mayor Moore and councilmembers. So this item is a proposed honorary renaming of the Katati Post Office in honor of the Pasta King, Mr. Abletto. And just as a way of a little bit of background, in November of last year, Sonoma County lost an icon, Mr. Abletto, the Pasta King. And in many ways, he was the embodiment of the American dream. He immigrated from Italy in 1949, began a new new life in Sonoma County, and worked his way from the fields to building a successful business, including years of serving pasta at all sorts of events. And he actually started his business, the pasta business, in 1974 as the spaghetti palace at the Sonoma County Fair, and it became an instant success, leading him to a career supplying pasta and Italian cuisine to Sonoma County. His reputation and the success of this spaghetti palace has led him to become affectionately known as the Pasta King. And with this, with this successful business, he uses as a platform to help a lot of nonprofits and other, other charity events through his, through his life. And, and actually, not only just in Sonoma County, but also for charities around the world. And so because of all this, Philip, all this work, working for nonprofits and other charitable organizations, he received Citizen of the Year, both for the city of Santa Rosa and city of Roner Park. In 2017, he received what's called the American Dream Award from California's 5th Congressional, Congressional District. And this award recognizes the achievements of immigrants in Representative Thompson's district, who made remarkable contributions to our communities in the areas of arts and culture, professional achievement, entrepreneurship, and innovation, and community service. And then just the next year, in the spring of 2018, Mike McGuire, our Democratic State Senator, welcomed him onto the Senate floor and presented him with a resolution in honor of a lifetime achievement of achievements and meritorious service to humanity. And then the next year, in August 2019, he, by the Regional Boy Scouts of America Council, they named Mr. Abletto as Distinguished Citizen, which is a high honor with the Boy Scouts. And in summary, if the council moves forward to authorize this, authorize the mayor to draft a letter to Representative Thompson by motion, then Representative Thompson would, the process would be that he'd introduce legislation to honor Mr. Abletto by renaming the Katati Post Office in his memory. So that's the quick overview, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. I'll bring this back to the council if I'd like to add to that. Councilmember Ford?
Quick question, why Katati, not Roner Park, for instance? I'm happy to have it. Just curious.
Well, I think it's because the Katati Post Office serviced his, he lives outside the city limits of Katati, but he's in the Katati Post Office route area. So that was the natural connection. And he was also married in Katati. Maybe that's another connection.
Thank you. Ben, Councilmember Harvey?
Ben, just to kind of answer a little bit your question, having gone and spoken with him many times at different events and actually out at his pasta place, he very much considered Katati his home and has for many, many years. He, even though he wasn't precisely in the city limits, he always considered Katati his home. He was really a very wonderful, wonderful man. You couldn't go to anything where there was fundraising, where he hadn't given. He was just always giving and giving and giving. And even if you just went out to talk to him, he was just the kind of guy that says, oh, here, you have to have some pasta. Like pull pasta out and say, oh, you have to have this tonight. So he was just that kind of guy, so.
Thanks. Yes, absolutely.
Seeing no further hands up from the council, I will go ahead and open this up for public comment if anyone would like to make a comment regarding this action item.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful idea. But I have two questions. What, what will it look like to honor him? Will his name be on the building? How, how, how does that work? That's the first question, and maybe that is yet to be determined. And the second question is, are we sure we're going to be able to keep our Katati Post Office? I have been thrilled that it is still here. But I don't know if we are going to be in jeopardy. Those are my two questions.
Thank you, Ms. Crump Shears. Do you want to tackle those, Mr. Obed, or?
Sure, yeah, it looks like we're probably done with public comment on this. So I can't, so to the second question, I obviously can't speak to whether the, I assume she's referring to the, some of the financial issues the postal service has been having. I don't know about the fate of the Katati Post Office, but I did, I did ask Thompson's aide about the fact that it was a leased space and it could potentially move in the future, and how would that work? And he'd said that it, that wasn't, that that didn't matter because the naming would travel with the post office if it moved to a different location, a differently spot. And as far as the, the, the name, it's my understanding that it would be named inside. So there'd be some sort of, like a plaque or something internal to the building that would have his name on it. That's my understanding, at least.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. At this point, seeing no further public comment on this, I will bring it back to the council if there's any further questions or suggested motions.
Sorry to interrupt. There is another public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Burgess.
Mr. Farage, go ahead.
Thank you, Lauren, and thank you, Mayor. I just got home from work, so I apologize for coming to the, the meeting a little late. And I had a couple of thoughts, and I don't know whether these issues or thoughts were brought up to you or to your attention before this moment here. But I'd like to make a couple of observations for your consideration on this matter. I knew Art Abletto, and I don't understand where your consideration for Art to be named, to be named for the post office came from because Art lived outside of Katati city limits, way outside Katati city limits. He did not pay any taxes in Katati. And he set up his restaurant outside of Katati in Roner Park, where there were plenty of places inside Katati that he could have chosen. But I spoke with Art a few times, and you know, his, he didn't quite have the love or passion for Katati that maybe some of the council members think he may have. So I don't understand why a Katati resident and taxpayer and citizen is not being considered for the name of the post office. Because I've talked about this with a few people, and and these are the questions that have kind of come, come up. Art was a known and famous World War II veteran who fought fascism abroad. But there are some citizens here in Katati who have fought fascism right here at City Hall and have been doing it for years, years and years. And so I'm a little surprised, as notable a man that Art Abletto was, I would like to see our community buildings named after, you know, our, our citizens, our residents in town who've done great things in Katati. And, and those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on that before I bring it back to the council?
That'll be the end of public comment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman?
Just wanted to make sure I was unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I think we're focusing on something and missing the big picture here. The issue who lives, in this case, isn't who lives where. If we stop for a moment, just think, the people in our community that have been chosen to be honored, that people remember and want to honor, they share one trait, that their lives, their actions, and their values has such a positive impact on everybody in their community that those they finally left behind wanted to honor that memory and remember that for the betterment of everyone, as an example for what to do. I'm reminded when I read that third paragraph of the background of Mr. Abletto refusing to fight for Benito Mussolini's army because he did not believe in fascism, and in fact, escaping, opposing the Nazi Germany occupation, then coming to this country and becoming such a fulsome and helpful and beneficent addition to it. I don't care if he lives just outside Katati or just inside it. He's lived right next to it. As a matter of fact, his house was Katati, and he was there before Roner Park Incorporated and changed our limits. So if we want to worry about how many angels dance on the head of a pin, I suppose you could look at that. But I don't think that's the issue. I think the point is this man was rather remarkable, and I support giving him this honor fully. We've honored an accordion player who made a difference and was well-regarded in this community. We've honored a former mayor that only had one, one short term, but it was incredibly memorable and meaningful term. And in the case, we have a man who spent his whole life supporting the community in a positive fashion. I think these are good things, and I support the large bulk of the citizens who back this. So I, that's a long-winded of saying I'd love to move this if it's time to move it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. The, for clarification purposes, the post office is a federal facility, and we don't really have the purview to, to name that. It's a federal designation, and that honor would go to our representatives in Congress. So, and I would also support that, being the fact that he was so philanthropic with the community and gave up his time and his resources and helped everybody out. I would be supportive of, of this particular issue. So if anyone would care to, I would be happy to entertain a motion.
If there's no further comments, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move that we authorize the mayor to draft and send a letter to Representative Mike Thompson requesting the renaming of the Katati Post Office in honor of Art Abletto, known in Sonoma County as the Pasta King.
I'll second that motion. This is Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess, we have a motion in a second. If you would be kind enough to do a roll call?
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. I think that would be a terrific honor for his family. Next, we'll move on to item B of the regular agenda, the council assignments as representatives and liaisons to various committees for the calendar year 2021. This is going to be interesting. I didn't know if- This is going to be interesting. I didn't know if there was a particular approach that we wanted to address this. Mr. Obid, if you had something in mind on that?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the real quick background is these assignments are done annually each calendar year. And so we are, it's time again to review these various liaisons and committee assignments. You will find that the, there's a table on packet page 18 and it has the list of assignments, subcommittees and assignments. Those appointed by the city council and then other, and at the bottom of that page, the bottom of that table are other assignments that are not appointed by the city council, but they're just on there for information so that when you discuss various assignments, you're aware of the big picture, what other committees people are serving on, what other time commitments might have. So so the normally, you know, normally I, I would suggest unless, you know, unless the council wants to do it a different way is that we would just run down the the regional committees and boards assignments and just verify that if their current members are there right now, if they're, if they're still there or if they're looking to make some changes, they can do that. You know, assignment by assignment, you'll see there's a couple vacant assignments that are vacated by former council members DeLasso and Skoman, those are highlighted. So those obviously need an appointment, but for the other ones that currently have members, council members in them, I would suggest is typically just touching on each committee and then discussing whether they're, you know, those existing members want to change. Or if there's an interest from maybe the new or some of the other council members to take those roles. So that's, I, I think that's probably the most efficient ways to run through.
Thank you very much. I'm fighting with my cat here on my desk.
Yeah, and I, and I would say, I would just say, I would just say at the very end of that, then I think typically the council would just adopt the motion, adopting the whole thing with the changes made as you went through the table.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that from the council? Shall we just go down and start to address each particular position?
Just a quick note, doesn't this agenda item require a public comment first?
He, yeah, is there any other, any other comments prior to opening up to public comment?
Mr. Mayor, through the mayor, we could open the public comment and let the public comment first, or we could have our deliberations. Then listen to the public and then see if we're willing to adopt what we have. Either way would work, I think.
I think if we look at our deliberations and open it up to public comment, it may give them an idea of what we're thinking and where we might be headed on that. And then we can come back and determine the particular motions.
Sounds good.
Okay. So with that in mind, the first one on the ad hoc, on the continuum of care governance, that ad hoc is not applicable because that has ended and the continuity of care board has been set up for the county. So that particular position is not applicable. The next one.
Mayor Moore, sorry, just for clarification. So Katati does not have a seat on the new continuum of care?
No, we do not have a seat on there. We have our next, our neighbor, Ronard Park. That seat is by the assistant city manager. Kind of a regional approach to that.
Okay.
And there are, yeah, there are no city assigned, assigned seats at this point. They're just assigned like by, it, it's kind of, it's convoluted, but it's not a city by city assignment.
Right. And it's not like a particular JPA or something like that at this point. It may evolve into something like that further down the road. Hopefully it'll evolve into something like that. Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Okay, so the first one we have is the Association of Bay Area Governments. We currently have Ms. Harvey as the member and Vice Mayor Landman as the alternate. Any thoughts on that?
I would like to keep that.
If nobody wants to be the alternate, I would be happy to continue supporting Councilmember Harvey, particularly because she rarely misses a meeting. But if somebody's interested in, in doing that and has a passion for it in, with any of my alternate positions, any of my newer colleagues, if you'd like to do that, feel free to speak up. So that works either way for me.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Sparks and Councilmember Ford, if there's anything that, that you are passionate about or want to really get more information on, feel free to just to jump right in and we can talk about that, what those particular assignments entail, time wise, et cetera. Thank you. Okay, so if we have no objection to that, we'll continue that as it is. Our next one is this Katati Ronard Park Unified School District two by two by two. This one has Ms. Harvey listed there, Councilmember Harvey, and no alternate.
We haven't had one of these meetings in forever. I'm definitely willing to, if there's someone that has a desire to do that, I'm willing to to give that up, but it is not something that we've had in quite some time.
It was even, it was rare prior to COVID and it's even not, doesn't seem like it's going to be something that's going to be occurring right away anyway.
Right. The last time that it was really very active was really surrounding issues around funding. That's really kind of the last time that we saw any activity on that. And basically when they had tax measures and they want, basically wanted us to help them with their tax measures, it is typically the only time that that ha- has been active. Other than that, they, I know Damian has tried to contact them a couple of times and they have not shown an interest in, in meeting with us. So that's what I know about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. And just for clarification, for those that may not be familiar, it's a little committee comprised of two members of the Ronard Park City Council, Katati City Council, and then two members of the school board. So if there are no screaming desires for that, we'll, we'll just leave that as it is.
We do need an alternate because we have a vacancy, so.
Okay. Any members interested? Councilmember Sparks?
Hi. So I'm happy to serve as an alternate on any of these things. I'd kind of like to look, take a look after we're finished with all of it, just to make sure I don't end up with too many alternate positions, but, but I'm happy to put my name down for that.
Well, thank you. We'll go ahead and put you on there. Okay. I think California Cities Annual Meeting Voting Delegate.
That happens right before the meeting, depending upon who is able to go to the meeting.
Right. So we'll go ahead and skip that one.
Right.
Next, we have the Mayor's and Councilmembers Legislative Committee Representative, Vice Mayor Landman, and we have an alternate for, a vacancy for the alternate. I don't know if there are any council members that are interested in filling that alternate slot. If not, I would be happy to step up and fill that.
Yeah, I would prefer on this particular assignment to continue with it, at least this year. We're in the midst of some change there and having spent some good years there, I'd like to make sure that everything's calmed a little bit before, before I step away. And, and I think it would be excellent to have the mayor as an alternate. Sometimes, sometimes these are sleepy little meetings. Other times there's very important things that have to be done quickly. And I think having the mayor as an alternate would be very valuable.
Okay. We are seeing no objection to that. Well, I will can accept that alternate position on that for now. Until we vote on that. Reverend Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. Do we have any people that are just dying to delve into insurance and risk management? Okay.
I think 35 years was enough for me.
Seeing that, I would be happy to continue that position and then we've got as our alternate, our city manager, Mr. Obid, who has done an outstanding job on that particular committee. As you may or may not know, we have been going through tremendous changes over the last several years and are looking forward to some changes coming up in July of 2021. So I think the consistency on that would be, would be well advised.
Hey, John, I have a question for you on that. Since, since there's the new, and I won't get the, the acronym correct, there's the new board for the new group and then there's the REMIF board. Is there two different groups? Because I know REMIF has to run off, but.
Well, it's CIRA.
CIRA, that's it.
Yeah, and they'll actually, the two remaining groups will be there just to kind of run out their tails on liabilities and things like that. And then once those have reached a certain point, but it doesn't make sense, then they'll kind of be merged into the one entity.
So they're going to keep two separate boards and not have one board for CIRA?
CIRA and, and Damian can probably clarify on this if I'm incorrect, but CIRA will be made up of representatives from both REMIF and ParsAC.
Okay. So we don't need a separate board on here with a
Oh, no.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Another position to fill? No.
Yeah, just, just.
The, the CIRA board is about 50 members when it's formed, when it starts in July. And then REMIF is 30 something, I'm sorry, ParsAC is 30 something and REMIF is 18 or 12, 14, 15, somewhere in there. So basically CIRA makes decisions and then they all kind of move to separate rooms and then they have their, their REMIF and ParsAC board meetings. You know, all, so it's all the same people.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so no objection. We'll keep, remain, remain with that. Next, we've got the Russian River Watershed Association. Currently, we have our Vice Mayor Landman and Councilmember Harvey as a member in the alternate.
And I'm willing to give my alternate spot up if someone would like that, if Ben and Laura would like that.
And I don't want to make it sound like I'm running away from this, but I was going to suggest, having been there, I think that's my longest serving one probably. If, I'm happy to continue, but if somebody else would like to take it, that would be fine with me. I see in this sense, if I was to open up the Russian River Watership lead, if Councilmember Harvey wasn't interested, because she should have first dibs if she wanted to do it, that would open one environmental assignment up and then we have the health action assignment potentially too. So that would be two decent openings for newer people. So I guess what I'm saying is if you want it, speak up now or forever hold your peace.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes, I'd be very interested in either the regular or alternate position for this one. The, several of the environmental related posts are my, are sort of top priority for me.
Okay. And Councilmember Sparks?
I would be interested in serving on this or on the Health Action Network. So maybe you could, is it possible to skip ahead and figure out what we're doing with that one and then because that would affect. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can, we can put tentatively, we can go ahead and put Councilmember Ford as a current member on the Russian River. We'll, we'll leave the alternate for now.
And I would be happy to serve as the alternate if he was taking the primaries on that unless someone else wants it.
Okay, well, that, that'd be fine too. So I, we can list you as the alternate on that and Councilmember Ford as the member on that one. Okay. Next, we have Sonoma Clean Power and we currently have Vice Mayor Landman as the member and Bacon as the alternate.
And I have to say Vacant has done a terrible job. It's just not been there. Actually, seriously, he was a Councilmember DeLasso and he was great. A few, few times I needed him, he was there. I, I would like to stay. This is probably, those who know me, this is probably the assignment I have the most passion for in my time as a council member. So with my colleague's support, I would like to stay there.
Any objection to that? Okay. Any volunteers as the alternate to Sonoma Clean Power?
That's one I would, I would very much like to do if there's not somebody ahead of me in line.
I don't see anybody right now, Councilmember Ford, so I think it's yours.
Go for it, Ben.
And you have to go for it with lots of energy.
Cool.
So, okay, next we have the Sonoma County Health Action. We have the member as Vacant and the alternate as Ms. Harvey.
So Laura, did you want this one as the, the lead then?
I would be interested in doing that, yes.
Terrific.
And unless somebody else wants the alternate, I'm happy to stay as the alternate unless Ben, you felt like you. And John?
You know, I think you're doing such a stellar job there. I wouldn't want to deprive you of that opportunity.
I'll be there for you, Laura.
Sounds great.
Perfect. So that'll cover that one. Next, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, Regional Climate Protection Authority, ACTA, RCPA. Current member is Mr., is Vice Mayor Landman, and the alternate is Councilmember Harvey.
Yeah, at this point, that's another one I would had some interesting times there and I think there's a little more to do. If, if you'll allow me, I would like to stay there if possible.
Any other potential nominees? I'm, I would be fine with that.
Is anyone dying to be the alternate? I'm happy to stay the alternate. Mark never misses a meeting. Just have to say that.
My car could use some washing. It could happen. I'll never.
Okay, so it looks like we're okay with that particular situation. And last but not least, Sonoma County Waste Management. Current member is Councilmember Harvey and the alternate is City Manager Obid.
I would like to stay on this and it sounds like from what I'm hearing, we could have some interesting issues with some of the changes on the other councils. So I, I think that definitely need to, to kind of see this through. And there's been some other issues and we're trying to cite the compost and the possibility of a household hazardous waste facility. So I really think it's important with the changes of the people that we've lost. We had some people that did not run again and or one that retired and or there are some struggling councils. So I think that it's important for that staff because there's some staffing concerns there that, that there be some consistency in the board.
I would think with your institutional knowledge, that would be critical at a juncture like this. So unless there's some objection to that, I would be okay with Councilmember Harvey. Any, any quests to be on the alternate on that? Okay, then we'll just keep Mr. Obid there. He doesn't really have a say in this. Okay. Oh, that was a little premature. I thought we were done on that. So next is the Sonoma County Advisory, Sonoma Water Advisory Committee. We have Ms. Harvey as a member and Councilmember Landman as the alternate.
And since I'm the chair, I think I'd like to stay.
But as I said earlier, if somebody's, and I would support that fully, but if somebody's interested in getting getting their feet wet. In this, another water-related. Thing, if somebody would like to step up as alternate, that would be fine with me. I will just warn you that Chair Harvey doesn't miss many meetings, but having said that, every once in a while, you get to go and help. So and it's a fascinating committee.
Councilmember Sparks?
I would be interested in serving as an alternate on on that one. I'd be able to learn from Councilmember Harvey's leadership on on that one.
Water's fun.
But if you miss the meeting, I don't have to run it, right? You're the chair of that meeting.
Ah, that'd be interesting.
You have a vice chair, I'm sure.
There is a vice chair.
I was just kidding.
Although the vice, that's another problem. That's a different problem. My chair got pulled off, so I have to get another vice chair.
And that would be through the elections, I'm hoping?
Just to council reorgs, there's some interesting council things going on.
Okay, so we have no objection to that. I'd be supportive of. Councilmember Sparks as the alternate and Councilmember Harvey as a member on that. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
You skipped over the library advisory board. Sorry.
Yeah, that was, that was up a lot higher on the worksheet. But it's there, it's in different places on the two sheets.
The Rona Park and Katati Library Advisory Board?
It's the detail table has it higher up on the.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, I'm looking on the page eighteen, sorry.
Yeah, the summary table.
Member, because this was Wendy's.
Right. I don't know if there's a desire for anyone to serve on that. I have served on that previously and thought it was pretty good, but if there's an interest. By other councilmembers, they're more than welcome to step up. If not, I'd be happy to step up on that one.
I don't see jumping.
Support you in taking that on.
You're a brave man, Mayor Moore.
We're talking about the library. Advisory board, correct?
Yeah, the lab, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm not committing to something I went, what? Okay, so I am on packet page twenty-three.
Oh. What what item are you on?
I'm on, well, I was going to the groundwater sustainability until somebody interrupted me, but that's all right.
I'm so sorry. And I would like to keep this. We are at a critical juncture on this. We're actually coming up with criteria and I think it. Till we get the plan in place, I don't think it would be wise to change.
No, and I think this was one of the original committees that they didn't think was going to be that. Convoluted, but it has since become. So I think having your knowledge on there would be an asset.
Yeah, it's, oh, my God. I never knew so much about water then, but what all of the the staff that we have on the on this and the things that they bring to us. I've learned quite a lot.
And Vice Mayor Lammon, are you still okay with being the alternate?
I'd be happy to. The workload with Councilmember Harvey being on there is remarkably slow. So as I said before, I'm happy to do it if somebody really wants it. I'm open to that, too.
Any thoughts from? Councilmembers Ford or Sparks?
Well, that's one that I would be interested in and unlike the previous one, it's it's a meeting times that I can actually do. So that's one I'd be interested in. It doesn't have to be now. I'd be happy to wait a year or two or whatever if Vice Mayor Lammon wants to continue.
I think there's no time like the present. I would be happy to let you jump in and roll up your sleeves.
All right, great. I'd appreciate it.
Perfect. Okay, packet page twenty-four. Chamber Commerce. I have been doing that for quite a while. I've had an affinity for the chamber over the years. If anybody else is interested in stepping up in that role, we've got Ms. Harvey as the alternate.
And I'm happy to let someone else be the alternate if if they so desire.
Seeing.
No, no, he goes in the meetings, so it's another one of those.
Okay, seeing seeing none, and we'll just leave that as it is. I don't mind doing that. So many things now are virtual anyway.
Right.
Okay. Now, the Mayors and Councilmen's Association Appointments, Councilmembers.
Right, Mayor Moore, the rest, the rest are just appointed by other bodies, so they wouldn't be, yeah, for tonight.
Okay.
Question.
Sure.
Have we advertised lately for the Marin mosquito vector control troll district?
Um, you know, we did earlier, as I recall, but we didn't get any interest. I was actually talking, talking with Lauren about this the other day about. Probably readvertising that one, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Sparks, go ahead.
Sure, um, do we, do we not, we don't need an an alternate for the Rona Park Katati Library Advisory Board? It says NA on there. I was just curious. Why not?
I don't know that we really had one on that because there are. I guess it's it's more of an advisory board, so there's not typically a lot of voting on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my understanding is why there's not an alternate because of because it's a non-voting body.
Okay.
Okay, so. I will go ahead and open this up for public comment based on the deliberations that we've just had. And see if we have any input in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. At this time, I see no hands raised for a public comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burgess, and we'll bring it back. I'm wondering what would be the best approach to a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Certainly.
I I believe I'd just like to move that we assign representatives, representatives and liaisons to the various committees and commissions. As described in our deliberations tonight.
I would be willing to second that motion. This is Councilmember Harvey.
We have a motion in second. Ms. Bishop, do you think that would suffice?
Thank you, Mayor Moore, I do. Yes, Your Honor.
Terrific.
Before, before we vote, I would like to suggest that we ask staff to read it back to to make sure everybody agrees, to make sure we didn't accidentally give John Moore every single lead assignment. It never hurts to check.
That's right.
Yeah, all right. So thank you, Council. This is what I have that you'd be making a motion on. So the ad hoc on continuum of care governance would. Be removed from the table. The Katati Rona Park Unified School District, two by two by two, the vacant. Alternate position would be occupied by Councilmember Sparks. Mayors and Councilmembers Legislative Committee Representative, the vacant alternate. Position would be occupied by Mayor Moore. What Russian River Watershed Association, the current member would. Become Councilmember Ford and the alternate Councilmember Sparks. Sonoma Clean Power, the currently vacant alternate position would be occupied by Councilmember Ford. Sonoma County Health Action and Monthly Rona Park Katati Chapter Meetings, the current member would be occupied by Councilmember Sparks. Sonoma Water Advisory Committee, the alternate. Member would become Councilmember Sparks. The Rona Park Katati Library Advisory Board, current member would become Mayor Moore. The Groundwater Sustainability Agency for the Santa Rosa Plain, the alternate member would become Councilmember Ford. All others would stay as shown on the packet. Page eighteen.
Perfect. So we have a motion in a second, a clarification. Ms. Burgess, if you would do a roll call?
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lammon.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. So now we would move on to, oh, okay, we didn't have any, so we'll move on to our city manager's report. Mr. Obid?
You, Mayor, members of the council. All right, so. As we were talking about at the outset of this meeting, the stay-at-home order continues beyond the initial voluntary county order, which was going to expire on January ninth. The order. Will remain in effect now in the Bay Area region until the state's four-week forecast indicates. An ICU capacity of fifteen percent or higher. As of at least yesterday, the ICU capacity for the Bay Area region was under one percent, so we have a ways to go. But hopefully, as we get into February and and. I think March, I'm optimistic that we'll move out of it. The County Health Department also has started working with Safeway pharmacies to assist in the vaccination program, which I think is going to be very helpful. So as they work through their tiered deployment of vaccines, this and hopefully other partners will speed the process. And the city is working also to reorganize its COVID page to focus on the current vaccination program and amplify. A lot of the resources available to assist residents and businesses as we transition to the recovery phase. Also, we were working with businesses on the tenting still for the first phase, as you know, when in. Unfortunately, they can't use them right now, but I think soon enough they'll be back into outdoor dining. So we're looking forward to the next batch of tents. We have confirmed another twenty by sixty tents in front of Down to Earth Cafe and Trade Winds. Which we're looking to install a little bit closer to when outdoor dining will be allowed again. Public Works is working on the platforms. And anyway, we're gearing up for that and potentially some other tents around the downtown. So rainfall, we haven't had a lot this season, so we have. What is pretty low levels in Lake Mendocino currently and Lake Mendocino is the smaller and the more. Temperamental of Sonoma's two water reservoirs and the level currently is trending with the. With twenty thirteen, which was a drought year. So because of that, Sonoma County Water, Sonoma County Water Agency, otherwise. Now rebranded as Sonoma Water will, will, I think, believe is already asked state to temporarily change Sonoma Waters. Water rights to base Lake Sonoma's releases on Lake Mendocino water levels. That may seem intuitive, but actually the current water permit requires. The releases to be based on Lake Pillsbury, which is in the the top of the Eagle River watershed. So they're a bit disconnected hydrologically. Also additionally, Sonoma Water has filed what they call a temporary urgency change petition. TUCP, which is similar to the one that was that was filed and approved in two thousand and thirteen to reduce the minimum inflow. Instream flow requirements. And so Lake Mendocino serves the in instream flow for the upper part of the Russian, basically from Mendocino down to the Dry Creek. Dry Creek Confluence where the Sonoma, the larger. Lake Sonoma watershed contributes water to the Russian River. Also, the Sonoma Water, Water Saving Partnership, which the city is a member of. Is launching a social media campaign to emphasize the need to save water by highlighting actions customers can take to reduce water use. As Councilmember Harvey mentioned earlier, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency has a big deadline. Next year, so January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. It's when the groundwater sustainability plan for the Santa Rosa Plain. I think for all the, all the different watersheds actually in Sonoma County, but ours is the Santa Rosa Plain. It's due at that time. So the Groundwater Sustainability Agency staff will be working. To draft and finalize. The seven remaining chapters of the plan and the draft will be completed soon, as I understand. To leave sufficient time for. A pretty lengthy public review and adoption process by all of the GSA member agencies, Katati being one of them, as I mentioned. We're also. Continuing to work on the draft cottage housing ordinance with presented to the planning commission back in December, planning commission in public. The final draft ordinance is expected to be presented to the commission for formal review and recommendations in February. With a final draft coming to the city council for the review. It's looking like April. And then also, you may have noticed that the community development department is currently running the multifamily housing design survey until. It's up and it's running until January twentieth. And if you take the survey, it'll provide, it'll enter you into our next giveaway, which also includes three one hundred dollar local business gift card baskets. These surveys and giveaways, which are funded by the SBT and LEAP grants. Are being used to gather community input for both that for the housing efforts that are underway. And provide baseline data needed to support the city's upcoming housing element update. So the survey can be also accessed from the CD community development housing webpage in addition to the social media. So if anyone hasn't taken that survey, I encourage everybody to please take that survey. It's going to be important as we look to. Develop some. Models of housing that we want to, that we want the community to grow with. Also, a minute. For administrative services, the city has partnered with Tyler Technologies to provide one lucky customer with an iPad and you may have seen this. On city headlines and also social media, but all you have to do is is register online and sign up for auto pay before February eighth. So far, I guess there's only fifty customers who are registered at this point. Since this contest opened up. But if you have any questions or want more information, please feel free to contact the Administrative Services Department at six six five three six three one. And then again, this is related to COVID, but many in our business community are experiencing the unprecedented challenges and impacts to their operations. And. In response to this uncertainty, the city is. Offering the ability to pause business license tax renewal payments for those businesses not planning to open or operate during this uncertain climate. And so. If this is of interest to anybody, they can check the city website. At municipalonlinepayments.com. Katati City. Business licenses and you can find it on the admin services page if under business licenses rather than trying to remember that URL. But this is a, this is a annual process in January. Business licenses are renewed and we do have some businesses, I think, that are taking us up on the. Opportunity to stop as the renewal until they actually reopen for for business. And then lastly, for recreation, recap, November twelfth, we wrapped up our final holiday celebration of two thousand and twenty with our drive-through breakfast with Santa event and this sold out. It was a, and it was an opportunity to provide a modified version of our popular breakfast with Santa. That has been hosted for the past three years and so guests were able to get car site and visits and photos with Santa. And then to-go pancake and egg breakfast and goodie bags filled with treats and crafts to make at home. We were also able to get plenty of elves to help out with our student volunteers from Rancho Katati High School. We also. Recently wrapped up our holiday food drive at City Hall. So the community, the community donated over four big barrels, those large, those large. Food barrels of non-perishable food items, which were donated to the Redwood Empire Food Bank. To distribute to those in need and we certainly appreciate how much our community has always come together. To help our neighbors and look forward to partnering with the food bank again soon. And this has definitely been a trend. Really, all through last year, it's been. The community has really come out and donated a lot of food and even money to the food bank. When we've had food drives at City Hall, so that's definitely, that's very much appreciated. And then as we move into two thousand and twenty-one, the Recreation Department will be working on. More safe and fun programming for our residents and neighbors and you can look forward to more drive-in movies, online contests and fun, a drive-through, bunny brunch, Valentine celebrations and more. online contests and fun, a drive-through, bunny brunch, Valentine celebrations and more. If you have any questions or want more information on city programs and events, you can contact city, you can contact Ashley Wilson at six six five four two two two, or at kataticy.org, and also, of course, always our city website at kataticy.org and the city's Facebook page. And with that, Mayor, I, it's the end of my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mayor Moore, you were muted there.
Thank you, Mr. Robin. Looks like we have a question from Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Damian, it looks like the Water Agency is going to put out more frequent and regular updates on the water supply. And I was wondering if it would be possible for us to be able to post those. They're nice because they're visual so that people can get a sense of where we're at and stuff. And they did grant, sent out a note and said that they were going to be doing them much more frequently as well as, as the Water Saving Partnership kind of kicks into gear to get us kind of conserving again. So I just would ask that we kind of put that information out on our website.
Yeah, I was certainly anticipating the Water Saving Partnership information coming forward that we put out. And if there's, yeah, if there's information that would be helpful to the public coming from the Water Agency directly, certainly, put it out.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions for our city manager? If not, okay. Now we'll move on to item number twelve, our City Council Member Reports. And who would like to initiate this? Councilmember Harvey?
Gee, am I the only one? So a couple of things. One, we had our Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting in December. And as Damian pointed out, the staff is working just as hard as they can. And I have to tell you, we have such an awesome advisory committee. They are just the, the group of people and their knowledge. And they're working very hard to help us with the metrics on how we're going to measure the plan and what we're looking for and, and everything. So we kind of got a little bit of an update on that. We are going to start with the groundwater user registration program that has to be done for the rural residential things. That's kind of been put off because of COVID and then, you know, some, some other glitches and things. So that'll be coming soon. And that will be after the rural residential outreach. So they sent out some surveys to all of the rural residential customers. And I had a preliminary meeting because I'm on the subcommittee, but we got a fifteen percent return on the surveys, which the consultant said was really very good and got some pretty good feedback, in particular on our Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa Basin. So that information will be very helpful. We got, you know, some of the usual, not happy people, but the, the comments that they did get were really very good. So we'll probably get a summary of that as soon as the consultant is done doing their thing. The other reason that they said it was a really good survey results is because there's the three basins, the comments and the answers to the questions and things were all responded similarly in all the different basins, which kind of helps with the credence of the questions asked and things. So that was, that they felt was really very useful to kind of make sure that the survey is doing what it should be. Our Waste Management Agency meeting for December was canceled. And last but not least, I was on the North Bay Executive Call, and I will get this information to Damian. But I want to make sure that people know that, in particular, Lauren Ben, the new Mayor and Councilmember Academy that is normally held in person, will be virtual this year. And it's that January twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, they kind of spread it out since it's not in person. So you will probably, really, it's really useful training, so you might want to consider that if you can fit that into your schedule. On Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, will be our first North Bay meeting, and it will be with Senator McGuire to see what legislation he's working on. And that'll be, it'll be, of course, a Zoom meeting, and that'll be January twenty-seventh, three forty-five to four forty-five. Also, the North Bay Division, as part of the new Mayor and Councilmember Academy, since normally we have an event where people can meet with one another, we can't have that. We're going to have a North Bay Coffee Chat that people can join, and that'll be Thursday, January twenty-eighth, between eight-thirty and nine-fifteen. And lastly, the second division meeting will be Thursday, February twenty-fifth, from three-thirty to five. And we don't have a set topic on that yet, but you might want to get those dates. And I'll, I'll have the, I'll give this to Damian so he can send it out to you guys, so in case you didn't write all that down. But that's all I have to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Vice Mayor Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've got a couple of things to report from the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, as well as Sonoma Clean Power. But I wanted to start by welcoming my new colleagues, Councilmembers Ford and Sparks. This is our first meeting with all of us together, so an exciting time. Welcome. So let's start, let's jump right to SETA, because that relates back to what I thought we might want to consider as an upcoming agenda item. So one of the items we had was a presentation from the Climate Center, from Ellie Cohen at the Climate Center here in Sonoma County, about the Climate Safe California Campaign. And this is basically a campaign that targets, of targets and solutions based in science with the action of necessary GHG reductions. It aligned pretty closely with what we already have set up in Sonoma County for our mobilization campaign. But in some areas, it actually exceeded it, and not so much because people wanted to sadly, but more in recognition of the darnness of the situation we find ourselves in. A notable example was calling for GHG reductions. The current Sonoma County Mobilization Strategic Plan calls for being carbon neutral by twenty thirty. The recommendation from this plan is to actually try and hit net negative eighty percent below nineteen ninety levels. And I'll let the daunting challenge of that combine with the sad necessity of it sinking on you, but that gives you an idea of what we, what we're looking at. At any rate, after thorough discussion, the Board of SETA did endorse this. And I think it's something that we're going to see popping up at other councils. There are over, I believe, seven hundred elected officials, business and community leaders that have already signed on. And the goal of this campaign is to take it to the state legislature and take it to the governor. So we will be undoubtedly asked, and so I think it would be paribus just to get in line and see if we could have a representative from the Climate Center come walk us in much better detail than I just shared through this plan, the need for it, and, and what it looks like. So if, if there's some agreement there, I'd like to request that. So jumping away from SETA, I'll go over to Sonoma Clean Power. And the first thing I want to give you an update on is you may remember we talked about Sonoma Clean Power and other community choice aggregations, CCAs. Talking about forming a group composed of CCAs, it would be essentially a joint powers association of, of other joint powers associations, or joint power authorities. And we were going to call that, I believe, these interim titles, the California Community Power, Community Power JPA. But the goal of this was allow us to pool our resources to create truly large clean power projects. As you know, CCAs throughout the state have created a lot of clean power and invested in clean power. But some of the projects are so large and so expensive, particularly with storage at the mass levels we need to replace peaking plants in the state, that they outweigh the abilities of even the largest of CCAs. So this is a venue that allows us to pool our interests and our resources to work together. It isn't a requirement, but it's the ability for programs to be set up, potentially for people to weigh in to see if it works for the community and choose to put their resources into it. So it's something we have still a good modicum of control over. So that's going forward. We did authorize our CEO to sign on to that. So Sonoma Clean Power will be one of the founding members of that. And one last note to finish up. I did ask, at the, at our Sonoma Clean Power meeting, I asked our board and our CEO to consider adopting some sort of guidelines for where we deposit our funds. In the recognition, at this point, with the size of Sonoma Clean Power, they are considerable. And obviously, money is a tool that can be used for good uses and should be used in a thoughtful manner rather than indiscriminately. And most importantly, to make sure that wherever we deposit that money, whatever organization we deposit with, that that organization have values that, at least if not totally in concert with us, were not fundamentally opposed to the GHG reduction and clean power goals of Sonoma Clean Power. I will note there's an example of a local bank that has roughly twenty-five million dollars of ratepayer funds of Sonoma Clean Power funds parked in it that is actually legally working against several clean power-related issues in this county that Sonoma Clean Power and its representatives, basically of all the councils, have supported. So it seems logical to put that money in a place where it can help an organization that's working in the same direction rather than benefiting one it isn't. So I'm sure it'll be a lively discussion, and I can hardly wait for it to come back. And that's my report for this meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. I did have a question, if I may, on the potential for the combining of the CCAs to create this JPA. Are you hearing any opposition from our friendly neighborhood utility monopolies?
Well, they're busy, they're busy as heck as usual, working in ways that, from my perception, aren't exactly beneficial for us. But this, I don't think so specifically. I believe probably the whole industry recognizes, particularly with the events of last summer, that we need better resources to respond to, I wouldn't even call them outages, but heavy hits on our power system, especially with changes we're seeing in weather and conditions, and an increasing and understandably needed reliance on clean power. So it's, I think it's a direction that they're probably going to. So this will just allow us to hit targets that I think we all agree are beneficial for the public and necessary going forward. So I, I don't expect that. What I do expect is it'll be just large, complex, and like many financial agreements, we'll take some careful thought, looking at each particular project as we enter into it. But I think for the most part, this will actually be a very good thing.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ford and Councilmember Sparks, I can't imagine you have any particular reports out at this point?
Nothing to report.
Okay, I have.
Nothing to report, but I would like to, to say that I'm very interested in discussing the Climate Safe California plans. So thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Landman.
And then I have a question for our newest two council members. How is your recruiting going for Planning Commission?
We.
You have to recruit.
We've, we've put up flyers, if you would believe it. I, I do have a phone call with a potentially interested person tomorrow, so there is hope on that front.
Terrific.
We are hopeful to have point, recommendations at the next meeting.
Terrific. I often think when people are like, oh, just get some volunteers, just get some volunteers, and it's not always as easy as people think it is. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had my hand up from earlier.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ben. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, I was just agreeing. It is, it is certainly not as easy as just saying, y'all come out.
Well, thank you very much for those reports. Now we will go to public comment on non-action agenda items. Ms. Burgess, do we have anybody interested in that?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. For our attendees, just as a reminder, use your raise hand icon on your desktop or smart device. And if you're calling from your telephone, just dial star nine. And I believe that'll be the end of public comment.
Thank you. I, I, being that there's no request, we'll close public comment on the non-action agenda items. And do we have any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
No, Mayor.
I thank you all so much. Councilmember Sparks, Councilmember Ford, welcome. Thank you for stepping up for the various committees. I think as soon as we get through this COVID crisis, hopefully, things will be much more positive going forward. I'm looking forward to us getting back at some point this year, maybe to an actual council chamber meeting where we can have direct visual contact with each other. And I hope that everybody stays safe and stays well and have a fantastic twenty twenty-one. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-one. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Thank you all.
Goodbye. Thank you. Good night.